Okay, welcome back to the Ross Board of Education meeting. If everyone, it's Thursday, June 29th, 2023. This is the Ross Board of Education regular meeting. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Dr. Kunkel, can we review the agenda, please?
Yes, do we want to do a roll call first?
We did it during work session, and according to Mrs. Logan, that's the only time we have to do it.
Perfect, alright, good. So just some highlights under the superintendent section. There are some board policies that we will approve, and I'll go over those more in detail when I get to my section. There's a MOU to approve for our teachers' negotiation, and there are some personnel schedules with a new position embedded in there, and we'll talk more when we get to my section. We're turning it over to Mr. Castater and Mrs. Logan to kind of give a brief summary of their section.
Okay, thank you.
We'll try to be as brief as possible. I think we've got 16 items on our section. It is fiscal year end, so you're going to see some fiscal year end items on the agenda, some normal monthly reports, quite a few special education contracts that Steve's going to detail later on. I also want to mention that we do have the resolution to withdraw from Butler County Health Plan on the agenda tonight. I know we've talked about that, as well as to authorize the superintendent and treasurer to move forward with Medical Mutual of Ohio for a three-year plan. I will be asking for one vote A through P unless anybody had anything they'd like to vote separately on.
Okay, before we separate anything, Dr. Kunkel, I would, on behalf of the board, we would like to pool and table the school facility application policy. So we want to pool it and table it. It warrants a little bit more conversation with us as a board, and we realized that in April this was a possibility. And this is in regards to the $30 per kid youth fee. We realized in April there was some talk that there was a possibility to do this stuff, but right now, we want to pool that and table that, and we will not vote on that tonight. We may in the near future, we may not. So that policy, if you don't mind pulling that from the agenda, please.
I got it.
Other than that, does anybody want to isolate anything on the agenda?
Yeah, I'm going to isolate 9A, the superintendent contract.
Yeah, those will be separate, yep. Those will be separate. Anything else? Nope. Okay, with that being said, we will... Can we get a motion to approve May 18th, 2023, board minutes? Can we get a first for that, please?
Motion.
Mr. Chanel. Mr. Kleinfelder, you the second? Mrs. Logan, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Chanel?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayes?
abstain.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Van Winkle?
Yes. Okay, we'll move to public participation. We have Laura Hyler and Randy Holm. Sorry, I butchered that. And they, 2679 Chapel Road, Laura and Randy would like to discuss the fee for field users' participation. That has been pooled.
Been pooled.
And so Laura, let me, let me just say this, just to kind of... So tomorrow morning, Steve Castater and Justin Beck, the treasurer, if he gets voted in tonight, the treasurer, they're going to communicate to every single youth organization that this has been tabled. More discussion's going to be discussed amongst the board, the finance committee. There may end up being a fee, there may not be a fee, but there just needs to be a little bit more discussion with it.
And if we're here on behalf of...
MRA, right?
I have a really loud voice.
MRA, yeah, I meant to say that.
We're on behalf, here on behalf of MRAA, and I'm the treasurer, Randy's the president, and it would, if this fee is put into place based on our number of athletes, this could be a substantial part of our budget, almost 10%. So for one, I think we need some discussion amongst the board. There's some things that we do for the fields that may not be taken into consideration, but it's a large part of our budget, so we would need to discuss this and know before we do our team registrations.
Hundred percent.
So that's, and that's really why we were here tonight, to request that.
Yeah, I, I'm with you, trust me.
Yeah, I know.
So again, Justin and Steve will email everybody, and that'll open up the discussion you're talking about. There's been a lot of people contact, there's been a lot of great valid points. It just needs, there needs to be more talk about it.
And I know there's been contact with some of our sport supervisors, but if we want the contact with the board, then we can go back to our supervisors, which might cut your discussions in half.
So when you're saying board, are you saying MRA board?
Yes, MRAA board, sorry.
Yeah. Do you have all that? If you don't mind, just make sure he's the guy, like Justin, that needs the direct information.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
But thank you so much for coming in, it's been a very hot topic.
Is it rude if we leave now?
No, I would, I would have left soon as, I would have left soon as we tabled it, but that's up to you.
Thank you for giving us the time.
No problem, and again, there, it just warrants a lot more conversation.
Yes, and we're, we would like to be involved.
One hundred percent, yep. Thanks Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks Randy. We'll go to Penny Webster. Penny Webster, right there, lives at 333 Sir Douglas Drive, and Penny is asking for, I think something pretty easy. So the contracts of the superintendent and CFO, the numbers, please...
Here, I'll say it.
Yeah, the, the numbers, you are a numbers person, and you want to see what the fringes cost, the side-by-side comparison of existing to proposed contracts. Great request, I think you already got all that information, maybe in the finance committee? Yep. In other words, what does Ross pay?
I mean, I know the salary.
Correct, yeah. So when you see retirement and this and that, you want to see the numbers from the last existing contract to this proposed contract, side by side.
Yeah, like, if we're paying 100% medical this time, did we pay 100% last time? I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, correct, yeah, that's a great question.
And in dollars and cents, what does that mean?
Hundred, yeah, great, great question. Is that something, Steve, that's easy for you guys to pool together within a reasonable time? I know Steve's gone on vacation, Penny, so it might be...
I mean, I, finance committee didn't do it, but I did it when we, when we had our discussion, so I've got something.
Penny, do you have Andy's email, the Ross email?
Yeah, I can get it.
Is this something you can email to, or?
Yeah, I've, I mean, I've...
It's pretty, yeah. Yeah, that was discussed when it was all put together, so.
Alright, mine's easy, Penny Webster's in town.
Yeah, I got it right here, I'm just going to give you this. And then Penny, after you review that, if you have questions and want to sit down with Steve or whatever, or, because he's the number, or Andy, then just, just work that out, yep. It's a great question. Okay, so we have Debbie. Do you, does Debbie mind saying her last name?
Favor.
Oh, Favor.
You know who I am.
You know what, I didn't, with that hat on, I didn't recognize, I apologize.
I've been tied for so long.
So Debbie lives on Central Drive in Fairfield, Ohio, which is in Ross. She has three, four questions. Do you have them written down there? We'll go with the first one. Changes to the Administrative Compensation Guide?
Yes, you have.
Reasons to, for Dr. Kunkel's raise, contract for new treasurer, Castater, and lawsuit. Let's start with number one. So this, just so you know, this is, we give up the five minutes for public participation, so when this thing goes off, don't stop, just kind of, let's make sure we get all your questions answered, but I am going to time it. Please set timer for five minutes. Okay, go ahead Debbie.
Alright, here we go. The Administrative Compensation Guide, the treasurer and the superintendent have both been eliminated from this guide. What was the reason for that, and what are the effects in terms of board governance for these, you are employees, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, good, okay, for these employees.
Okay, Andy, do you want to answer that question?
I can take a stab at it.
Because Andy's sent a few emails back to people, and his verbiage on the way he explained it is probably a little bit better mine, so.
So, A, it's, most schools do it this way. It's considered best practice. They're out of the administrative, taking them out of the guide. There's a couple of reasons for that. One, when we negotiate with teachers, having them in that guide kind of puts them in a middle spot where they're negotiating for themselves, but they're acting on behalf of the board. So that's always complicates things. Secondly, superintendents and treasurers, probably treasurer especially, are hard to come by, there's not a lot of them. So having them, having them outside gives us a little more flexibility in individual contract negotiation to be able to attract, attract and maintain good, good quality candidates for that.
That make sense?
So far.
Kind of, okay. We'll move to number two, which we're not going to talk about yet because it's not approved. Sorry.
Understood.
If you want to call me afterwards, my number's in the, on the...
I got you.
Okay, got you, but I'd rather not talk about that until we can...
Are you guys going to discuss that? I mean, or is this already kind of a pre-approved plan?
It's going to be up for vote. So it's been vetted for a couple, couple months now through the board, so.
By vetted, you mean y'all discussed it?
Kind of, yeah, so it goes through, this is really getting into wee, I'm going to stop your time, by the way. So, you know, it started, both contracts will always start in what's called the Finance Committee, okay? Which is, we've created committees, Policy Committee, Heather and I are on, we pulled a policy tonight. So contracts are started there, and that happened a couple of months ago, and then they are, then we start negotiating back and forth and come up with an agreement with the contract. So we've kind of, we've already seen the contract, know about it, have talked about it, so that's about as far as I can go legally.
How do you do it up?
Innocent Britain, which I'm going to, that'll be your last thing, but the lawsuit, I was going to tell you about here, but... So, okay, so yeah, we've talked about the contracts. The next one is contract for a new treasurer.
Now specifically, with all due respect, sir, I have never met you, and you're a very nice man. I'm a nice person too. Your contract is for three years, and yet I was reading in the ORC that for this, when you're new to the position, that you are only supposed to be contracted for a probationary period of two years. Do I have that correct?
So the contract for the superintendent and treasurer was created by Innocent Britain, our lawyers, and they've, they've vetted this contract, and it's legal according to them, and that's as far as I'm going to go with it, because I'm not a lawyer. So that our law, if you have questions and you want, you want to be put in touch with the school lawyer, then that's no problem, but they, they are the ones who created and...
Innocent and Britain.
En-ice in Britain, E-N-I-S in Britain. And just for reference, we...
Britain of the country?
B-R-I-T-T-O-N.
Yeah.
B-R-I-T-T-O-N.
Okay, so that leads to lawsuit. That's the same answer I'm going to give you. Our lawyers are Innocent Britain. What's the, what's the, it says lawsuit number four.
Well, actually, that was from something a long time ago, I've never...
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I know, I don't know what other lawsuits you've involved in, but that's, I'm not what I'm inquiring about that. But the one about the AC out at Eldog, and I keep looking and looking, and honestly, I'm a very good graduate student, okay? I can do a lot of good research. I haven't found any disposition, or I don't even know what, I can't even find out what the debate was about, and do I need to call this, the...
No, we can actually, you could probably brief that. The school district has sued someone, but I'll let you.
Yeah, so I'm guessing 18 months, two years ago, we submitted a lawsuit through our, our legal team to the Butler County Court System. I don't recall the exact amount, I believe 3.1 million, but please don't quote me on that. But this could take years to resolve. Obviously, it's been 18 months or two years now, so this is a lengthy, lengthy lawsuit, obviously.
And if I remember correctly, it was also a class action suit with several other school districts.
It was the Attorney General.
Yeah, yes, correct.
And what was the topic?
The topic was the faulty systems, right? Yeah.
What does faulty systems mean?
It was the HVAC units that were not functional. It was against Triton and...
LG.
LG, yes, good, good. Again, that, that could take many, many years to resolve.
So that has not been just, I mean, it's not off the record, I mean, it's still on those.
Oh, yes, correct.
They take years in the court system. We won't, they, we were told it'd take three to four years before we even get an answer.
We must be knowing, you know, it's more than three to four years, still in litigation. One other thing, since, and I didn't write it down, if you don't mind.
It's alright, I'll add it.
I don't have a student in the system. I cannot get all of the notices that y'all very thoughtfully send out to everyone. I have, do you want to get emails? Yes, clear. Enter email, nothing happens, month later. Do you want to get emails? You know, on and on. I would like to get the emails, and is that possible? Is the public entitled to, like, the school's being closed, or whatever it is that y'all are telling other people, I don't know that.
I'm not really picking up what you're putting down right now, but I think he is.
Sure, so if you can give me your address, we have a database of non-parents that also get our emails, so that's on our website, but if you want to give me your email address...
Twice now.
And we can check into it, might, might be obviously non-functional, but just give me your email.
Perhaps if I just call the office?
Call my office, yep. Or just give me your email, I'll make sure you get added, it's not a problem.
Okay.
Are you talking about the final forms?
We, we have a program called MailChimp, which was designed to be able to distribute information, and there's a button on the website to be able to sign up for those emails, so it might be a technical issue within MailChimp, we can look into it.
I'm just curious, what, what kind of, what do we send out through that? I wasn't aware of that.
It would be essentially a lot of the information that's sent to parents through final forms and so.
I can give you one important example, and the one that came to my attention is when the board sent out a letter saying we shall not submit a request for a levy on the November ballot after the May ballot had failed. And I heard about it, and I'm basically, you know, that real great guarantee of truth, and I got hundreds of scolds and answers and contradictory information until finally, sir, due deference, Mr. Kunkel published it. I don't know what prompted you, but he published it, and that was good, and I just, I just want to see it. And that's, that is, that was an important, I think, communication, that the majority of the district did not see, and people had all kinds of made up answers. Okay, so to summarize then, if I have questions about Mr. Kunkel's contract or Mr. Castater's contact, contract, I should kind of contact Anna's, God, I can't read my handwriting, Innocent Britain, is that true?
Yes.
Do you have any further hints, or do I just?
Yeah, yeah. Bill Dieters is the one who did the contracts. You know him?
Yes, sir.
There you go. He did the contracts.
Excellent.
I, I want to clarify something too that you just said a second ago, but you said the board sent something out about the levy, the board, we, we don't send stuff out, the school district does, just to clarify. I don't, I don't send all...
That is an important discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to remember exactly what I was reading.
No, 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 it was the one about the levy, you said.
Yes, it was.
You said the board sent something out, but the board actually didn't send it out, the school district did.
What is the difference?
Well, because the school district is the one that submits it out, like, I don't send, none of us send it home.
In this room?
Yeah, none of us, board members, send it home and send information out from the district.
Oh, I forgot about that.
Okay, I got you, okay.
The way it was phrased though, it was like the Board of Education of Ross, and that, that, I misquoted completely, and maybe included your name, had, did all this and said all that, and did the other thing, and then finally says what I was looking for, we're not going to put the levy out in November.
A lot of people like that, including me.
And then you put it on the website?
All that's on our website, correct, yes.
It was eventually put on the website, which eliminated my problem entirely, but I don't expect you to post everything, every communication on the website, because my goodness, how much bandwidth does boy have, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So I just, does Mr. Dieters have permission to speak with me about this?
Yeah, I mean, I can give him a heads up.
If you don't mind.
Yeah.
Do you need my phone number or email?
Nope. I got your name, I'll just tell him that there's a concerned citizen that's going to be emailing him.
Thank you.
I do know he's gone for a week too, by the way, I think all these, I think everybody's on vacation. He probably won't answer you right away. Okay, that's good, thank you Debbie, thanks for coming in. Nice seeing you again.
Nice to see you.
Been a long time.
Very, very nice.
Okay, we'll move on to superintendent recommendations.
Yes, sir. Dr. Kunkel, floor is yours.
Items A through F, sorry, I like to block those.
A through, did you say A through F, right?
Yep, 7A, A through F. Let me briefly talk about each of the policies. Policy JHG, this is required sexual abuse training we have to do for our staff. This is a new law that went into, into effect in Ohio. We're just waiting for ODE to come up with a curriculum and how it's going to be taught. Policy IGCH is College Credit Plus, that's revised, some revised language for military families. Policy BDDA, that's a notification of board meetings. Policy IGAE, this is required suicide awareness for students in grade six through 12. Policy IGBEB is a new policy on dyslexia training identification. And then Policy DJF, this is moving the threshold to $10,000 to get multiple quotes. And then finally, Policy GCB is the Revised Admin Compensation Guide. Item two, these, or item B, I'm sorry, this is the MOU, the teachers' union and management sat down in the springtime and decided together to postpone negotiations until the fall time, so that is the official MOU that we're asking for your approval. Item C is a contract for extra days for Mrs. Logan. Item D is a resolution to amend the emergency management plan. Item E, these are personnel schedules, and I just want to highlight one area under personnel schedules. So when Mr. Castater moved on to the treasurer's office, we are not replacing his position, which is an HR director, that will be my office, will take those duties on. Ms. Gina Burdette, my clerical person, has gone back to school to get her HR certificate, so she will transition into the HR specialist, and this is a cost savings, obviously, for the district. We're confident that Mrs. Gina, myself, can handle the HR duties. And then finally, are the work calendars for the employees for next school year. So those are items A through F for your approval.
Lot going on.
Lot going on.
Okay, can we get a first, please, under superintendent's reports and recommendations on a block of A through F? Could we please get a first on that?
Motion.
Mr. Chanel, can we get a second?
Second.
Mr. Kleinfelder? Mrs. Logan, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Chanel?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayes?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Van Winkle?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to a very busy office this week. The treasurer's reports and recommendations, please.
I'm going to cover letters A through J.
Okay.
Starting with A through D is our normal monthly reports that we present, including our investments, we do have a couple of then and nows, along with two donations, and then our monthly treasurer's reports, cash summary, and then also a monthly kind of spending plan update as well. Starting with letter E, E through J are MOUs and service contracts, primarily for special education. You can see Title, Title III Consortium, audiology services, vision impaired mobility services, and then school psychology, and then a few changes to a program with Beckett Springs that we have a couple of students involved with. So those are the, the first several items under their, under our section.
Okay.
And then continuing on with K is the resolution to withdraw from the Butler Health Plan. This requires the board to approve this resolution, and then for us to provide that notice to BHP at least three months prior to the January 1st date when they have new rates. So that's K, and then we move into L, which is to authorize the superintendent and treasurer to contract with Medical Mutual of Ohio. So we will be contracting with them on a, a district basis for medical pharmacy and vision insurance, and superior, superior dental, for dental insurance effective January 1st, 2024. This will be a three-year deal at a bundling rate guarantee of plus 2% for 2024 and 0% for the next two years. And I just want to remind us that with BHP, the reason why we went this way is because for the past two years, the current year, the increase was 17.9%, and the year before that was 9%, and we have been told that for the next two years, they're working very hard, but that we should anticipate double-digit increases for the next two years. So we engaged with a, an insurance consultant and did market bids, and so that's what you see before you.
And we're going to save how much?
And we're going to save, with the three-year deal, it will be over $2 million savings, so it was worth our time. Then you also have the final amended certificate for this fiscal year, which ends tomorrow, June 30th, 2023. You also have the final appropriations, the final budget for this year to approve. All of those are by fund, and there are some fund-to-fund transfers there, moving money between the OO9, which, which are the funds where we have our school supply funds reseeded into. We have some class accounts from graduating classes that we want to transfer into our incoming senior class account, and then finally, there are some fund-to-fund transfers, moving money from the general fund to close out some, some old grant funds, to clean things up. So I know that's a lot, we apologize for the length, but it's all very necessary.
So are you blocking A through P?
P, yes.
Correct? Okay, can we have a first under treasurer's reports and recommendations of block A through P? Can we have a first for that, please?
Motion.
Mr. Chanel? Can we have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hayes? Does anybody have any questions about all that before we vote? There's a lot. That's a lot going on.
Let me comment on the health insurance, because this is a monumental step for our district. So we're going to put together a committee made up of teachers, administrators, support staff, and we'll meet on a regular basis to look at data, look at trends, make decisions based on our data. We have had conversations with the teachers' union, obviously support staff, but this is a monumental step for us. It's obviously, like he said, Jenny, $2 million. I'm amazed that more districts don't do this, but it's good for us, and it's going to be more work, but I think it's going to pay off in the long run. So we'll get through this, and we'll have meetings and committees, and it'll be a good thing.
Can you maybe describe for the listeners what the consortium is?
Mrs. Logan, you want to answer that?
Sure.
So we've, we're in currently the Butler County Consortium.
Right. We, we are part of a consortium which includes several school districts in Butler County, and there are some in Hamilton County and maybe even some in Warren County. But they come together, and they pool together, they go out for bids, they have an insurance consultant that works with them, and they manage that, and everybody gets the same rates, the same plan details. Like, if we would want to do something different on our benefit structure, we could not do that. It's, it's, everybody gets the same. And when it comes to details, like understanding your trends and how you're doing as a district, you kind of lose that personalization, but that's what a consortium is. You got highs and lows, and everybody comes together. So, hopefully, that helps with some description.
Yeah, I mean, insurance is a numbers game, so in theory, all these school districts together should be able to get better rates than the individuals, but we've learned that's not the case since then.
Yeah.
It's going to save a lot of money over the next three years.
Yeah, and, and it's good to take a look. I mean, we didn't know when we engaged with the insurance consultant whether it would be advantageous for us to stay with B H P or to go out on our own. And, you know, we could have gotten very different results, which was, you guys are bringing that consortium down, and you're better off staying with them, but that's not what the results showed for us.
And I'm sure the questions that the staff are going to ask, is it apples to apples? Is it a close insurance?
Plan design is the same.
It's, it's pretty similar, okay? Great, okay, thank you.
I was just going to say, as you develop healthcare initiatives, if you guys as a whole do well meeting the trends and standards, then you're going to get incentives. When you're in the group, say, Middletown, I'm just making something up, has more cancer rates, or more smokers, or more whatever, then we're penalized because...
Because of the, the...
Right, so, we do well, we get on our own, so I just appreciate that. We're getting credit for being, you know, our rates have, we got credit for the way we are.
Mm-hmm. That's great. Okay, Mrs. Logan, so Mr. Chanel was the first, and Mrs. Hayes was the second. Could you please call the roll?
Mr. Chanel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelter?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Van Winkle?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the Board of Education section. Under A is the superintendent contract. Can we have a first for that, please?
Motion.
Mr. Chanel? Can we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kleinfelter? Mrs. Logan, could you call the roll?
Mr. Chanel?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelter?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayes?
No.
Mrs. Webb?
No.
Mr. Van Winkle?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to B, which is treasurer's contract under Board of Education. Can we have a first for that, please?
Motion.
Mr. Chanel? Can we have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hayes, I think beat you. A little quicker. Mrs. Logan, could you please call the roll? Call the roll.
Mr. Chanel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelter?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Van Winkle?
Yes. Okay, we will, we don't really have a legislative report this month for Mrs. Webb, so we'll move on to, I know the Butler Tech report's going to be probably not very long, because the meeting was fourteen minutes, but Butler Tech report, Mr. Kleinfelter? Laura's yours.
Yeah, we had a very brief, we had a very brief meeting at Butler Tech on June twentieth. Mr. Graff was not present, and I don't think they were, had too much detail without him being there running the show. So, Mr. Sprankles had a very abbreviated meeting. Probably the only item of note for the meeting was that they did get final approval from their capital request from the state of Ohio to go forward with the advanced manufacturing that's going to go to the Miami Hamilton campus location, and then the, they're getting a couple of million dollars from the state to expand the aviation program at the Middletown Hookfield Airport. And I think eventually, they're going to get some FAA-approved repair, airframe motors and a little more advanced things that they're doing. There's a tremendous shortage right now in airline world with regard to mechanics and airframe specialists. Graduates from Laurel Oaks are walking out, getting a hundred thousand dollar jobs at Dayton, C V G, Indianapolis, Columbus, so, and they're working as many hours as they want. So, that'll be a good thing. I also have a copy of the student success report for every board member. This is also online for anybody who wants to look at it, Butler Tech's website. This is kind of a year wrap-up in that. So, that's all I have for Butler Tech.
Awesome, thank you. So, we will go around the table for board comments. We'll start with Mrs. Webb.
I don't have any at this time.
Mr. Chanel?
I think you said none, didn't you say none?
Yes, I don't have any.
Sorry.
Mr. Chanel?
I'll just say congratulations to Mr. Castater, a new role, and looking forward to it. Congrats.
Mrs. Hayes?
Yes, same. And then, congrats to the spring sports. It's exciting to hear, even though our numbers were down, that we still persevered and, you know, hope everyone enjoys their summer. And Stacy?
Mr. Kleinfelter?
Summer's almost over. School starts August tenth. Let's go. I would just like to make a couple of comments.
Yeah.
Can we think about as a board moving to an electronic packet where we don't have seven-pound beast in our mailbox?
So, if you remember, when you...
Hey, I got board docs up right here in front of me.
Listen, let me, let me finish.
I got every document right here.
Let me finish. If you remember, on your second stint, you had the option of getting a board packet or doing electronic.
I didn't know.
And you said, "Well, if they're going ahead and printing them, you might as well just print one for me, because I live next to Mr. Chanel." But, Mr. Conkle, I'm, I'm hearing Mr. Kleinfelter saying he does not want to pack it. So, that's one less stop for Gina.
We can, we can honor that request.
You said a couple of things. Anything else, Mr. Kleinfelter?
No, that's it.
That's it, okay. Thanks again to Mr. Beck, who, great presentation on athletics, and congratulations to all of our administration, and a big thank you, because this month has been crazy with interviews and replacing jobs, and the packet's been really, really busy, and I know the administrators and principals and superintendent office, and everybody's been really, really busy. And the last thing I want to do is thank or congratulate Mr. Castater, who is our new treasurer, and congratulations. Extremely well-deserved. I think the, the process was great, you know, starting with Jeremy and working with Mrs. Logan all year long, so the board and the district's in really, really, really good hands. So, I'm going to embarrass you a little bit, but if you don't mind, I want to have you and your wife come up here, and the board will stand up behind you, and Mr. Beck's going to take a picture, so we can kind of send that out on social media tomorrow. So, do you want to say anything before we do that?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm excited, and I agree. I think it was a, a great year of an opportunity to kind of, to really learn so much about this other side of the house. I feel like I had a good background being in H R with some of the things, but I'll put Mrs. Logan on the spot. I couldn't have asked for a better mentor.